Good evening and welcome to the May 6th City Council Meeting. If you'd join me for a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, Ms. Jalowski, roll call, please.
Michelle Volk.
Here.
Lou Kellier.
Dan Walter.
Here.
Joshua Lee.
Here.
Okay, great. Moving on to item number three, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for you to provide, citizens or business folks, up to three minutes. If you do, come on up to the front and say your name for the record.
Tammy Sanders. My time starts now. Mayor Hillyer and city council members. I'm a 25-year resident of Lakeville. I'm passionate about the well-being of our community. Multiple times a month, week and sometimes daily, community members reach out to me asking for help to address an issue, to vent about what is happening to them or their child in this community, or to ask me to share their story. I use my voice for them when they fear retribution from our leadership. Tonight, I'm here to address a matter that questions the integrity of our city's leadership. Last week, the unethical and disrespectful actions of Mayor Hillyer not only violated the boundaries of civility, but were an abuse of power entrusted to him by the citizens of Lakeville. It all began innocently enough with a simple exchange on his public social media account he uses as the mayor of Lakeville. What followed was a private message from him calling me a psycho. The mayor of Lakeville called a citizen a psycho. I responded to the mayor privately with a sincere apology and advised him that I had already removed the post and less than 30 minutes of it being online. It should have ended there, but it didn't. Despite my apologies in private on voicemail and on his public social media account, what followed was a descent into a reprehensible display of harassment.
I is now joining.
Instead, reaching out to me and engaging in constructive dialogue, he chose to escalate the situation by publicly vilifying me, falsely accusing me of exploiting his children for political gain, and described me as a lunatic because psycho wasn't enough. He blocked me on other social media posts and created a platform for others to join in the barrage of hate, insults, and lies in his campaign of character assassination. When citizens reached out to him over concerns about his post, he made excuses for his behavior by claiming to be a victim. The mayor took the situation to a dangerous level without pause for his position in this community and has crossed the line into the realm of libel as he has knowingly spread falsehoods and defamatory statements to vilify a citizen. This is not only morally reprehensible, but legally indefensible. His actions have now caused me and others to fear for my safety in my community. Mayor Hillyer, it is your duty as a leader to foster an environment of respect and inclusivity, not one of fear and intimidation. I call on you to immediately cease your harassment of me and immediately remove any reference to me of this situation. I am neither psycho nor lunatic, but I am a woman in this community who will continue to use her voice. I call on you publicly to apologize for your behavior on the same public media platforms you used to harass me, this time without blocking citizens. To the city council, I urge you to take decisive actions to address this issue and ensure that the safety and rights of all citizens are protected, to hold Mayor Hillyer accountable for his actions, to condemn his behavior in the strongest possible terms, and to take appropriate measures to ensure that such abuses of power are never allowed to occur again. We cannot allow fear, intimidation, and harassment to silent dissenting voices or suppress criticism. Our city deserves leadership that leads by example, that upholds the highest standards of ethics and integrity, and treats all citizens with dignity and respect. Thank you for your immediate and full attention to this matter.
Well, first of all, it's Hillyer. Second of all, if you ever mention my children again on social media, I will respond the same way again. I will. Yes, so this is the meeting. If you ever mention my children the way you did again on social media, I will respond the same way. You do not. You had your three minutes. Thank you, you can sit down.
No, no, you can't make those statements that continue to be false.
As I said, ma'am, if you bring up my children again on social media, I will respond the same way. You will not get an apology.
And you know I did not harass your children.
And sit down now.
You are continuing your harassment in these chambers. In these chambers, you're continuing the harassment and derogatory and defamatory statements. I did not harass your children, and you know full well I did not harass your children.
And if you do it again, I'll respond the same way. You can sit down. Appreciate you for coming.
I'm not going to sit down now. You'll have to make me sit down because you do not get to use your power to defame me. You do not get to continue to do this. I get to call you out. I get to criticize you.
And you are. You have the First Amendment right, and you're doing that.
You do not get to sit in that seat and continue this line.
Ma'am, if it was an issue about policy, about what I think, or whatever, I'm happy to have the conversation, but you're not going to mention my children or what they wore to school or didn't wear to school?
I did not mention your children on that post. I mentioned you. I called you out. I said, "I'm not posting a picture." I am not linking.
Exactly right. On my page, that's exactly right, but on a private page that was sent to me, you did mention my children, demanding to know if they wore red to school.
You don't get to intimidate me.
I'm not intimidating you. I'm answering you, and you're wasting everyone's time.
I'm not wasting anyone's time.
Well, you can stand there as long as you want.
Okay, great.
Okay. We'll move on. Any citizens' comments? Okay, moving on. Mr. Miller, additional agenda information.
Mayor.
Reprehensible. Y'all are allowing this?
I just came here to see what's going on with our city, right? Because we have a real issue with what's going on with our teachers, and I'm just here to say.
Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Tammy Field.
And address?
And I came here tonight to see what's going on with our city because obviously we are a city of just homes. We don't, we have a lot of businesses, but really, we are a city of homes that make up our community of kids and teachers. And it's like, at some point, we have to learn to work together. And I'm appalled, sir. I'm appalled that this is how you just spoke to someone, and everyone on this city council let it happen. Is this really what Lakeville has turned into, that we can talk to each other like this as citizens and as public figures? I am pleading with you guys to please bring back common decency. Just say we're sorry when we're sorry, when we make a mistake. Our, this is a very heated time that we have in our life right now, and it's like, if we cannot come together and just support each other, sir, please. What, you just said that you would call her those names again. You are the mayor of our city. You can feel that way, but to sit in the seat that you are sitting in right now does not feel good as a citizen.
I appreciate that. As I said before, if you mention my children, that's the type of response you get. If you want to talk about policy or what's happening, totally open to that.
Ford. I need you guys to say. Everyone's children's are off limits, but you know what? You do not get to say that sitting in that chair.
I absolutely do because not only am I elected to this position, I also am a parent. Period.
So I want to tell you a story.
You've got about a minute left.
My daughter was sexually assaulted in our school district.
I feel awful for you.
Thank you. And guess what? Guess how much support I have gotten and what names I have been called and the things that I have had thrown against me? I understand what you're saying about your kids, but we have got to learn as Lakeville citizens to work together because this battery doesn't work. I understand what you're saying about your feeling for your children, but let's work together instead of just fighting each other. Thank you.
Okay, last call from comments? Okay. Mr. Miller.
Mayor, council, there's a revised item that will be at your table that'll be addressed at item 7D with the gravel use permit.
Okay. Moving on to item five, the Police Department Quarterly Report. I'll turn it over to our police chief, Paulson.
Good evening, and here to present, like you mentioned, our first quarter report from the police department. And all of our work in tonight's report and everything we do at the police department is all framed under our mission statement, which is to ensure an excellent quality of life in Lakeville by serving and protecting in a professional and innovative way. We always say that extends to everybody in our community, not just our residents, not just our citizens, but anybody going to school here, traveling through here, enjoying our parks. We aim to protect and serve all of those folks on a daily basis. So I know the council had a moment of silence at a prior meeting, but I think it's my first report since the tragic incident up in Burnsville on February 18th where we lost three fellow first responders, two police officers, Matt Rugi and Paul Elmstrand, and firefighter medic Adam Finseth. And obviously, with the proximity with our communities and just the trauma and terrible incident that happened, it had an impact both on our police department, our fire department, but also our community. And we had officers that were there early that morning with the incident and certainly in the hours and days that followed. And we're appreciative of the support from the council to allow us to step up, to help out. I know, like I mentioned, not just the police, but also fire, Public Works, Communications, probably several other city departments as well. So I was kind of touched by some of the comments we received from community members that saw our squads and our officers up in Burnsville offering their support for the work we were doing to support them. So we see it internally, but it was nice to see the community at large see the support and that that was their wish also, to see us doing that work. Talking about a few leadership rotations, so highlighted here are our three lieutenants. We have three in the department, and they oversee our patrol division, our investigative division, and our professional standards. And the beginning of March, those three kind of did musical chairs where they rotated divisions. We do that for a couple of different reasons. Number one, as our mission statement says, we value innovation, and sometimes a way to do that is a fresh look and a fresh perspective on some of our units, and having a new leader in those areas helps to do that. It also offers an opportunity for some career growth and development, allowing people to supervise and oversee things that maybe they haven't had as much experience with in the past. So for Jason Hyder, Jason Jensen, and Jason Polinski, we're appreciative of their efforts. You don't have to be a Jason to be a lieutenant, but it just so happens that's the way it worked out. Community engagement, we sometimes get the question, why do we do community engagement? And there's a lot of answers there, but just in a nutshell, policing really is built on working with the community, and we're working in partnership. Trust is a huge factor there. And sometimes it's hard to really bridge trust and develop relationships on simply calls for service. So these community engagement efforts are opportunities outside of someone calling 911 where we can spend time with folks in our community. And I think helping with building those relationships, offering some transparency certainly helps that trust-building piece. So on the left, there's our Citizens Academy graduation, which the graduation was in March. They kicked off in January with, I think, about 10 weeks, and I think we had 16 graduates from this year's class. That's always a well-received program that we offer. On the right there, we had some officers attend the Landscape Consumer Expo at Lakeville North High School, partnered with Lakeville Fire and our Public Safety Foundation to staff a booth. And then in the middle, back to the Burnsville incident, the Minnesota Twins had a really nice gesture for their home opener this year in early April to bring a bunch of first responders from Dakota County, both, all three, police, fire, and paramedics, onto the field for a nice pre-game ceremony where they honored the three fallen first responders. Some upgrades to our interview room with our investigation capabilities. We've had camera systems in these rooms in the past, but those were a little bit dated, so we upgraded to an Axon system, which is tied into our body worn cameras, our squad fleet cameras, all of our evidence-based systems are Axon. So this just integrates a lot better behind the scenes with that work, saves some time on the backend with processing these things, allows detectives to not only view livestream interviews, but also a quick access to review video and interviews. Also allows us to submit these things a lot easier to our prosecuting attorneys, both at the city and county levels. Just a few training bullet points to highlight here. Top one there, standardized field sobriety testing. That's what you see on the road sides on DWI stops, the one-leg stand, the walk and turn, things like that. Annual defensive tactics and less and non-lethal training, annual firearms qualifications, and a few more as we go down. You'll kind of notice there, a lot of these are mandated trainings. Our strategy throughout the year is to try to knock out as much of our mandated stuff as we can do. Our post license, our police officer standard and trainings board, we have a lot of training requirements to keep licenses active, so our sworn staff tries, we try to get them through as much of this stuff early on as we can so we can do more discretionary work later in the year in case schedules get busy, which they often do. Couple of cases of distinction to note. On the left, there was some good work by our street crimes unit. They received some information on a wanted individual who had several outstanding warrants for felony-level crimes. This individual was attempted to be apprehended by Apple Valley PD, and he fled in a vehicle and was able to evade capture after stealing a felony amount up at their Menards. And this was just a case where slowing things down and developing some good strategy and utilizing resources paid off by doing some surveillance, executing a search warrant in late March where the subject was safely taken into custody and also received some fresh charges for some narcotics possession. And then on the right, kind of a domestic-related incident, a series of incidents actually, with no contact order and order for protection in place. The victim of these orders noticed her ex-boyfriend outside of her home, which was obviously alarming. She tried to drive to a local gas station to evade him. He made contact with her vehicle and ended up fleeing the scene. We put some alerts out trying to apprehend him. Our Drug Task Force, which does a lot of work in fugitive apprehension, they were able to follow the court process and get a tracking order on the cell phone, pinned him down, or at least his phone, down in Rochester. He happened to be with his phone, as folks usually are these days. And the Drug Task Force paired up with Rochester PD and safely took him into custody as well. But just another example of utilizing our resources and other agencies and connections to bring folks to justice and hold them accountable for their crimes. This is a stat and a slide that we started to show, I think, late last year, but these are calls, the 911 calls that go directly into our Dakota 911 dispatch center, and the call taker then realizes that some of these are crisis-related, where they don't need a medical response, they don't need a law enforcement response, so they route these directly to Dakota County Crisis Center. As you can see there, in the first quarter, 400 calls countywide went through that process, the referral process. About 7% of those were in Lakeville, 26 calls. I think last year, for the entire year, we accounted for about 9% of the calls, so staying somewhat consistent there. And generally, about three-quarters of those never require any law enforcement involvement. Once in a while, that crisis worker determines, yeah, we actually do need police or medics out there, but quite often the case, they're able to resolve it without that level of involvement. Moving into some statistics here, our case numbers, these are actually incident reports that are pulled. You can see the first quarter of '24 was eerily similar to '23, just two different, two more reports pulled for the first quarter of this year than last year. And then CAD calls, these are computer aided dispatch calls. These are not only calls for service that get sent to officers, but also if an officer self-initiates on their computer screen, those are factored into these numbers as well, and those could be traffic stops, checking on suspicious vehicles, buildings, things like that. We had about 13,000 in the first quarter of this year, which was up from about 9,800 last year. And then highlighting just a couple of areas that we routinely look at, our welfare checks were up 180 over 117 last year, and then mental health crisis calls, 169 over 89 last year. Moving into traffic and accident, you can see our traffic stack numbers were actually down quite a bit in 2024 in the first quarter, but the good news is accidents, both property damage and personal injury were down as well. A lot of this is attributed to the mild winter and lack of snow and ice, which is helpful for not only Public Works, but also the police department and fewer crashes. This is just a comparison of our CAD calls by jurisdiction comparing to some of our neighboring communities that are of somewhat similar size and scope. See, we're just a little bit above Eagan in that graph. And then some of our major offense reporting on some of the higher-level crimes that we deal with in fair number at least. Driving under the influence, we're down a little bit, down 18. Aggravated assault, these are assaults that involve either some type of weapon or some type of injury that's more than just bumps and bruises. Those were down a little bit. General assaults were up, and then pretty consistent on damage vandalism and sex-related offenses. Our weapons calls were down, but obviously you can see we receive very few of those overall, which is a good thing. And then finally, our social media presence. Again, this is kind of tied to our community engagement, but we use social media for a lot of different ways, to disseminate information, to solicit the public's help with certain things. And as you can imagine, a lot of our work is quite serious, so we try to take some time to have a little fun on social media as well, to the extent that we can. So on the left, there's officers Lindberg and Nelson doing a little Valentine's Day pose, I guess you would call it. I'm not really sure. They were good sports about that. The middle one is an April Fool's Day spoof on a goat canine patrol. I'm not sure who created the photo, but there's a couple goats in the front there, and then Canine Kilo, who's always happy to pose, don some rabbit ears for a hoppy Easter post. Happy to stand for any comments or questions you may have.
Council, questions, comments? Thank you, chief. I just want to continue to extend our gratitude to you and your team for all their hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Anything you'd like to highlight, Mr. Miller?
One item tonight, Mayor. Item 6C is a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety. This is basically a grant that our police department received to help people who might be looking for a career transition and then move into law enforcement, and so this will help pay for their education.
Council, any issues that you'd like to discuss further? Now, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion on the consent agenda? Not? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Consent agenda passes. Move on to item number seven. The first is a public hearing on application for Lakeville Brewing, DBA LBC on the lake for an on-sale liquor license, and we have staff report or anything? We're just gonna have a, okay. Applicants, if you wanted to share something, you can. Otherwise, we'll just open the public hearing. Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody that has to comment about license for LBC on the lake? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. With that, any council discussion? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the liquor license. Okay. Walter?
I move to approve a First Amendment to concession agreement between the city of Lakeville and Lakeville Brewing Company, LLC.
Is there a second?
That's not the motion. Correct. I have my hand up as well, so I will make the motion to grant an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for LBC on the lake at 20135 at Pava Avenue.
And can I give Dan the second?
Yes, you may.
Any second? Is there a second?
Dan?
Second.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion about the liquor license?
Wrong here.
Just a comment that this does not change the intent of what was approved before, and so for any public listening in wondering why this came up again, there's no intent to change the beer and wine sales that were previously established.
Very good. I'll just add that through this process, we learned of some very antiquated state statutes that required us to go through this process, and so here we are. So hopefully, we'll get that changed next year in legislative session, but until then, we'll move forward. So with that, roll call, please.
Volk?
Aye.
Hillyer?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations. We're looking forward to you guys opening. Moving on to item B, a public hearing on the application for Final, Final, Final Lounge and Event Center for Consumption and Display Permit. And only because this is a new business, is there somebody here that could just briefly talk about the business? Come on up. Welcome.
My name's Kristy Halby. This is Tony Halby. We're the owners, and we are opening up a venue here in the city to help with the city and community have more opportunity to have different venues such as, or events at the venue itself, like graduation parties, retirement parties, gatherings, showers, fundraising, all of that.
Great. And just so people, how would people find you, where you're located, and is there a way to find you online if someone's looking to host an event?
Sure. So currently, we do not have an online presence, however, that is being created. We are just off of 50, so if you know where the Cub Foods is on 50 or over that direction, we just, we are also Exuberance Chiropractic Wellness Center. So this is the backside of that building. It's right in front of RE/MAX.
Very good. Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on the application for the display permit? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. All who's in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Any other comments from council? Otherwise, I'll take a motion.
I'm surprised no one else wanted to ask this, but is there something behind the name Final, Final, Final?
Yes, it's about gathering, getting people together, and usually people don't want to leave once you have a good time, so.
So it's like the three goodbyes type of a thing?
The Minnesota goodbye.
Final. Let's do a final, final, final. Yeah, and you'll see it's F3, so it's also known as F to the third power, if you will. Lounge and Event Center.
Great, thanks.
And with that, I'll take a motion to approve the license. Joshua?
Move to approve a consumption and display setup permit for Final, Final, Final Lounge and Event Center for the period of May 2024 through March 31st, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that, roll call, please.
Hillyer?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Good, congratulations. Good luck. Yep. Okay, moving on to item C, ordinance amending titles 10 and 11 of the city code. And I'll turn it over to our Community Development Director, Ms. Goodroad.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to present the annual zoning ordinance update. We're doing it in a couple of different parts. We'll be back again sometime early summer with a few other things. So this is our annual review. We like to review the code based on projects that have come through over the past year, things that staff has found the ordinance that needs clarity, update best practices, reflect new development trends, and then include any statutory changes that might have occurred in the previous legislative session. So for background, a lot of research was done in-house as well as with our consultant. We had a work session on February 18th, 2024, and we did, it's not on this slide, but we did have a public hearing at our last meeting on April 25th. So the Plating Commission has reviewed and recommended approval for all of these items that are in your packet. So I'm gonna just highlight a few things, and then we can go through any questions that you might have. But one of the first things that we looked at was in the subdivision ordinance. It's not very clear in the subdivision ordinance that an outlawed has to be, if an outlawed is going to be divided, it needs to be done through the plating process. So we needed to change that definition of lot. And then we also clarified some older requirements that we have in the code that requires a whole bunch of paper copies. We do everything electronically right now, so we wanted to clean that up and then make sure everything was consistent with statutes 1599 for review times. We also looked at our definitions. This is something that we do every year. There's always new ones that pop up. Oh, we should clarify this. So we looked at commercial uses, minor auto repair, daycare facilities, and religious institutions, and just updated those definitions, and then added a few that were missing related to funeral homes and mortuaries, micro dwelling units and sacred communities, which deals with a new section that we're having to add to the ordinance. Last year, the legislation, legislature approved a new ordinance or a new statute, 412.925, that basically requires that cities have to allow two point nine two five, that basically requires that cities have to allow natural landscaping within their yards. So it's something that we need to add to our ordinance. We've added it to the landscaping section. We're following different elements of the state statute within that section. And we are requiring, so that we have some review authority, an administrative permit, looking at the planting list, and ensuring that there's a management plan, so that somebody has some guidance if they choose to do this within their front yard, and that we have an opportunity to work with them, provide some education, as well as making sure this area is managed. Educational uses, we wanted to address some of the daycare head start, early childhood and adult education, and allow those within schools. That wasn't very clear in the ordinance as it reads today, and to add in adult education into that. So that's what those clarities are. You're gonna see that all over the pages, because wherever we have those uses, we had to make all of those little adjustments in all of those districts. Sacred communities is another element that was added. It was approved last year. Governor signed it into a law that basically creates provisions for religious institutions to have the opportunity to locate micro dwelling units on their campus for providing expanded affordable housing. And so the intent of the ordinance as it's drafted is to add reference to state statute, but carry over some of the requirements that is outlined in the code. Micro units are basically small units, not larger than forty, four hundred square feet. They have to have foundations anchoring them. Water and electric utility access has to be provided either to the units or through the facility. There needs to be adequate parking, an operation plan by the church, and then there are limitations on occupancy. So there are some references to the statute, but also within the code, this addition. So this, because it was added by the state statute, we have to comply and add this to our own zoning ordinance. So again, you're going to see wherever we allow religious institutions, this language has been added with a reference to the main section in the code.
Do you want us to ask questions now or to wait?
Certainly. I'll do my best. I have the statute in front of me, and hopefully Andrea can assist.
So I'm glad to get the clarification on the micro dwelling, because at first, as I was reading, I was visualizing like a tent city. And this obviously gives me a little bit more certainty on the projects, if you will. When we say in, does it have to be tied to like a church building? Because you said it can be in an area where a religious facility is, which is basically anywhere, because we don't, right, we don't outlaw a church basically anywhere. So does it have to be tied to a religious entity, number one? And number two, we have a series of home churches in town. In theory, could they set these up in the backyard, based on how you read this? And maybe if you don't have the answer to it, I mean, I think my decision's the same anyway, because we don't really have a choice. But I'm just curious, for our own purposes, what type of parameters we can put on that?
My interpretation is it needs to be connected with a religious institution, and the statute does define that. So in subdivision two of the statute, it says religious institutions are authorized to provide permanent housing, i.e. micro units. And the religious institution is defined, means church, synagogue, mosque, or other religious organization organized under chapter three fifteen of the state statutes. Now, what I don't know is, so that would, I would interpret that to the same as a local church, a local synagogue can provide this. I don't know if you have additional clarity. I don't know how to answer the question on the House.
Honestly, I think some of this will probably have to be developed as we move along. Right now, I would agree with that interpretation, but I assume that somebody could try to put it on religiously owned land that doesn't already have a mosque or a church on it. I don't think it's clear.
Okay. Anybody else have questions on that as we're kind of going? Helps a little bit. Thank you, Wolf.
We added some clarifications and some current requirements around car washes, just asking that, you know, or looking towards requirements that the doors are closed other than as vehicles are coming through and churning through the wash. And we've added a vacuum decibel limit, and then a restriction that they not be located within the residential zone property or the yard abutting the residentially zone property. We also added some hours limitation and adjusted the location in some of the zoning districts it's permitted or allowed as a conditional use. We're addressing parking lots. This came up because we are getting a few phone calls of people who wanted to utilize commercial land simply for the parking of vehicles for EV stations. So until we have an opportunity to really determine if that's something that we want to allow, we do allow parking lots as a permitted use in the districts listed on the screen. We added the clause, "City of Lakeville only." So it would be a parking lot, let's say in downtown that we already own. We wanted to make sure that a commercial lot isn't bought simply for the parking of EV vehicles.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question on the car wash. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
If the wash is not occupied, can they have the door open? The reason I'm asking this question is because having worked at a car wash, the reason you have the door open, especially when you don't have clients, is because you're trying to decrease the amount, you're trying to get the water to evaporate. It causes all kinds of mold and other types of issues, and it's hard on the equipment if you can't get it dried out. So my question is, is there a way, does it have to be closed, especially when you have an operation that's twenty-four seven, some of them are, and they're not near a residential? And if they don't have any clients, can they leave the door open?
The way this is written is the intent is that the door is closed while it's in use, so that it's closed during the noise. So if it's not, if it's not...
Wasn't sure what "in operation" totally meant.
It's intended to be while it's in use.
Okay.
Because that's what we're trying to knock down is the noise.
Right. I get that. All right. And then how do you, are you going to be sending a letter to all of the car washes in Lakeville to inform them of this? It won't affect a lot of them. A lot of them keep it closed because of the fact that the dryer is too close to residential, you know, et cetera, but...
This is more for any new car washes. So if there's a car wash that's currently operating, we haven't had any issues, I don't see any reason to, you know, we haven't had any complaints. What's happening is we're getting more interest in car washes and different kinds of uses, like the M-two district that was pointed out in the memo.
Okay.
All right. One of the other sections that we spent some time on is in our industrial district. So you know, in the air lake portion of the industrial, the older portion, I should say, we have a lot of smaller building footprints. We also have a lot of shorter roof lines. And so those buildings don't often get, they might have more difficulty in finding a new use if a business of all of a sudden decides not to continue occupancy or a lease turns over. And so we wanted to create some more opportunities for those uses, particular things that are happening internally as an allowed use, even as an administrative use, without having to go through the hurdles of a conditional use, so that we can make these buildings more utilized. So that was the reason for a lot of these uses being added to those I-one categories or I-two categories in the industrial district. So indoor firearms range, fitness centers, indoor vehicle sales with a limit on the number of vehicles that could be stored. There's restrictions in there that don't allow the outdoor display of vehicles, veterinary clinics, those kinds of uses to introduce to the ordinance so that we can keep those older buildings viable. And then other topics pertain to tree size. There were some other clarifications added to outdoor storage to ensure that there is proper pavement, hard surface material. And then home occupations, we're allowing one resident employee for non-service business. That was something that we've had a few requests, and as home occupations are expanding, we added some clarity to our motor fuel signs on the canopies from a change that was done previously. And then just some minor changes and clarifications on our residential transitions districts. Future topics look forward to. We're having a work session on Thursday night to talk a little bit about our off-street parking requirements. The first thing we'll do with the Planning Commission is ask them just their view, their input and direction on just the amount of spaces that we're requiring over different uses. And we've done research over about fifteen different communities. And then that whole chapter, we'll see an overall or overhaul. It's just dated. It's a little cumbersome to read. We also will spend some time on the sign ordinance, attainable housing incentives as we go through conversations about our housing sales tax, and then revisit our commercial uses. So for what has been in front of you in the packet, again, we did hold a public hearing with the Planning Commission. They recommend unanimous support. And I would stand for any questions.
Counsel, questions, comments? Dan?
A question, not to dwell on car washes too much, but I, so the addition of the hours for car washes, are there some that maybe under conditional use permit or something already have hours in place? I swear, I've seen that.
They may, and those will continue.
Thank you. And, no, I think that's it for me.
Okay, other questions?
That's what I always get confused with when we update our ordinances, that it isn't like retroactive.
Right.
Go backwards. Okay. And I always get confused by that.
Joshua?
Another question. You answered my questions earlier today via email, and I appreciate that. My only comment, I guess, is I'm not quite convinced yet about the impact of the change to section thirteen A around buffer yards due to the change in height of coniferous trees. So there's a change from a requirement from an eight-foot tree to a six-foot tree. And at the Planning Commission meeting, the rationale around that was around the availability of those trees. But my concern really is more so as buffer yards are, tend to be the properties that we get the most complaints or concerns about noise. And so buffer yards are a combination of both a berm and vegetation. And so I didn't want the impact to impact the height of the overall requirement for a screen, even if the trees are shorter. I don't think I have an issue with the tree change. It's more of the overall buffer change in height.
So just to clarify, here, don't mind the eight to six, but the next page, section A where it says ten feet buffer versus eight.
I'm guessing that's why that changed on, because of the tree?
Yep.
So I guess what I'm asking, and I don't know how high that berm would have to be at this point, or how challenging that would be to create a two-foot higher berm, but that's what I'd like to look at a little bit more before approving that, that buffer change.
Or before approving, okay, so approve the tree height, but not the buffer height. Let us evaluate that?
Right.
Okay. We can make that change before the mayor signs the ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Any further comments? If not, I will take a motion. And I, do you want us, do we need to recognize the, okay. So whoever makes a motion, we'd have to just say, removing on section thirteen, letter A, the change from ten feet to eight feet. If anybody wants to.
It's coming up here in a moment. I move to approve an ordinance amending titles ten and eleven of the city code and assembly ordinance for publication, with the exception of section thirteen A.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the changes? Okay, great work on that. With that, I'll take a roll call, please.
Walter?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Volk?
Aye.
Hallier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to item D, Superior Sand and Gravel Interim Use Permit. And are we, want a staff presentation first, or the applicant, or? Okay, so Mr. Swift, if you want to come up and give an overview of your request?
Good evening, counsel, mayor. Thanks for taking the time tonight to hear our request. Brief description of our request, or, sorry, my name is Dan Swift. I'm an employee of Superior Sand and Gravel, SSG for short. I've been with the company for ten years. I'm here tonight to represent the company and answer any outstanding questions you may have. Brief description of the request is, in years prior, this site has had a gas berm, the site located at one nine two five zero Kendrick Avenue in Lakeville, has had a berm that has remained untouched from the mining and excavation, from untouched from us and prior operator. Reason it's been untouched is because there was a gas main running through it. Last year, they did remove the gas main and turn the easement back over to the property owner. With that being said, that makes available approximately three hundred thousand cubic yards of aggregate material, which is a non-renewable natural resource for use in construction projects in the area. We're asking for permission for an IUP to mine the berm and process the material until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. I wanted to briefly touch on some points for some feedback that's throughout the process that we've gotten feedback on. And one of that is the timeline, proposed timeline. The reason why we asked for twenty twenty-nine is because the muse, it's consistent with the Musa Plan. There's no development there, or the earliest the development can take place is twenty thirty. The primary driver, I guess, for the import-export of fill into this property is the local economic construction market. So the construction work in the area is the primary driver of import-export. We can't really predict that market. With that being said, I do have some numbers from prior years that maybe we could gain a better estimate on timeline of reclamation filling operations. Excuse me. We took over the site in twenty twenty. So we've been, we've been through four construction seasons. Average amount of fill brought in is about ninety-two thousand yards per year, which is a sixty percent increase from the prior operator year-over-year average. Twenty eleven through twenty nineteen, we have sixty percent increase in average of fill brought in. Out of the past three construction seasons, we have brought in more fill than we've exported out of the site. Twenty twenty-two being a year that we did capitalize on some good projects in the area, a year where we brought in a hundred and sixty thousand cubic yards of fill in, which during that year, there was, for every cubic yard that we exported out of the site, there was two cubic yards imported. That being said, with the availability of three hundred thousand more aggregates, a good opportunity to get more involved in some construction projects in the area, quote some bigger jobs. I see that average construction market staying the same or not being radically altered. I would say that average should increase to over a hundred thousand, which the grading plan estimates a three hundred and twenty-five thousand yard fill needed with the new grading plan. plan. With that being said, our goal is three years for reclamation, three years for substantial reclamation, I should say, with possibly a fourth.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
When you say, is that reclamation of this new deposit, or that's of the entire site?
Because of the change, because of the availability of that, the grading plan, the grades were raised. So that would be replacing that berm, plus raising grades on the rest of the property, which would be more attractive for a developer.
So you say three years for the entire parcel, I guess, is my question?
Yes, three, that is, that it's our best estimate, being if anything changes for construction, why is that?
Okay, I get that.
Okay.
And is that three years after the twenty twenty-nine, or that's basically running in parallel? Is the mining and reclamation running together, or is it?
Yes.
Okay.
So we would, if approved, we would start as soon as we were allowed via our operating permit, we would start mining. We believe we can have the entire berm mined in two construction seasons, which would be twenty, end of twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-six, we're hoping to have substantial completion of the site. With a fourth possibly needed for buttoning up, grading, seeding. Another clarification is the crushing of concrete and asphalt recycle will not be done in this pit. We will be asking to crush the natural stone in the berm, which will allow more diversity in products and allow us to go after some of the jobs that, example would be a chamber system, which we could take a lot of that export off of that site and import the rock for the chamber system. To clarify, clarify the hours of operation, we're asking for seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday, with no processing of material on Saturday. And with that being said, the reason we're asking for Saturdays to continue filling operations is so that we don't have to turn down work on a Saturday if there's a substantial amount of fill coming in for a construction project in the area. We want to be, we want to have the opportunity to take that fill and not turn that contractor away. Last four construction seasons, we've worked a handful of Saturdays in there, and it's kind of only when it benefits, it's high volume, and we get fill. Other than that, I mean, we're a hundred percent committed to restoring the site. We are a hundred percent committed to restoring it as fast as possible, as fast as we can. That being said, thank you for taking the time to listen, and I guess I'll answer any questions that you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Swift. Mr. Dempsey, do you want to give a staff report? We'll call you back up if we have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Evening.
Glad to be up here again, it's been a while. Mr. Swift gave a detailed outline on their proposal, and I'll try to add to that as far as what the process has been for the review, and what the city code requirements are, and the planning commission's recommendation. That was a result of the public hearing that was held, I believe, on April, April twenty-fifth. So the request here again is, is for this property here, which is located northeast of the corner of one ninety-fifth street, Kendrick Avenue, I thirty-five, and then north of one ninety-fifth street, north of Casperson. Little bit of background, this property has been mined since about nineteen sixty-eight. The period of time between the seventies and the, and the eighties, there was a considerable amount of material that was brought out, exported from this property after mining. And sometime, sometime in the early nineteen nineties, there was a determination made that there was a, the property is likely over, overexcavated in terms of the amount of material, I won't say, shouldn't say overexcavated, there was no plan established for how that would be filled. So nineteen ninety-three, the conditional use permit was renewed, and a similar process is we're looking tonight to allow areas of new mining in the property, and that was primarily in, in, in this quadrant area here. This project happens to be the very first planning report I wrote for, presented to the planning commission and council in nineteen ninety-three, just a coincidence. And so it would be my, my joy to see this wrapped up as much as So the last mining area was this strip here, which was next to Kendrick Avenue, this here area here, that's completely mined, there are piles that are sorted in here. And then since that condition, interim use permit was considered and approved for a one year in twenty twenty-two, the, the gas company, Center Point Energy, removed this, this old high-pressure gas main that served the south metro. I think it was installed sometime in the, in the nineteen forties, I believe. And, and that was relocated to a different location in the city, and, and that left this area of one hundred foot wide easement area available for aggregate mining, and that is why the property, operator and property owner have approached the city to allow this area to be mined. Little bit of zoning information here, this property continues to be zoned for residential, a mix of medium to high and low-density residential. At the time that the property is proposed for development, that's how it would presented, be presented to, to any developers. Sewer to locate, to develop this property is located in this vicinity, north of, you know, the common thing, restaurant here, we know of Porter House and the townhomes north of that, is basically where the city sewer is, seven tenths of a mile south. So all this land in here, outside the Musa area, would have to be brought into the Musa and served as development occurs north, bringing sewer. This is the property here, it's Musa Area B, again, the property to the south, it's also within that Musa Area B, and that establishes a timeframe estimate of no sooner than twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-eight, at the time that twenty forty update was completed seven years ago. This is a part of the comprehensive plan that talks about aggregate resources, it shows the areas of the city that have aggregate resources, most of this area here is developed, this is the Ritter Meadows area here, and the Rich Karen property to the, to the west that was also mined. This property here is, is where we're looking at tonight, and the areas that are south have already been mined and reclaimed, most of those established at the time that the interstate was constructed in the early sixties. And these, again, these are the former gravel areas that have been mined, including Spirit of Branch and Farms, Jackson Property in the north, and then this area along the corridor thirty-five. This represents the final estimated grading plan in order to bring this site to a level that would allow for future development. The planning commission held a public hearing on April twenty-fifth. And public input, there was one person that commented at the public hearing, we had two comments received through emails, concerns relating dust control, how that's handled, noise from trucks that are on Kendrick Avenue that may or may not be coming into this property and with a request for engine, no engine braking signs is the main request, and this property owner lives to the, to the north. And so the planning commission did recommend, the city council approved the interim use permit subject to nineteen stipulations that are outlined. I did make some amendments, I should point out, with stipulations E, which is number six in the report, and stipulation K, which is number eleven. Those have to do with removing reference to the crushing of materials not being allowed, and that was the, I believe, the, the concrete and vituums, which is, want to clarify that that's not allowed. And then also the recognition that aggregate material, the natural rock that's being mined, would be allowed as the, as crushing. And then also that there's no, there was a reference to Sunday operations, which was, which is not being proposed, is not allowed under the current interim use permit that's proposed. So with those nineteen stipulations, there's also findings of fact for your consideration, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Very good. This is not a public hearing, but we typically, for these type of events, will, or issues, we'll open it up if there is any public comments. I'll do that now and then allow the council to have a discussion. If there's anybody that wants to share? Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, good to see everybody.
See you.
Do you want my name and address? Doug Anderson, one nine eight two seven Jersey Avenue. Just for context, I live on the northeast side of Lake Marion, down toward Antlers Park. I can view the boat launch and the, the eastern end of the gravel pit to the northwest of my home, across the lake. Mayor Hellier, council members, city staff, thanks for your diligent work on this application. I want to say at the outset, I'm grateful that the stipulations include that they no longer can bring in materials to crush and import and export out of the site. That's been a huge part of the operation, I think, the last number of years, and it's time just to stop that. So I'm grateful for that, I'm also grateful for Mr. Dempsey providing the clarifications of stipulation number six and eleven, or whatever the letters are in the materials you have, that just, I think, helps to clarify things and be clear that particular stipulation number six, demolition, concrete and vituums shall not be imported to the property, period. And, and I think that's good. I trust he'll support those clarifications and those stipulations. And my real reason for coming tonight is to talk a bit about timing, and I appreciate the gentleman with this operator talking about what it might take in terms of doing the mining. I was told by staff that it would take, that, that they were told that it would take two years to mine the area, the area of the abandoned gas line, I'm not sure if that's two years, or, he said two construction seasons, so it might be less than two years, I guess. I fully understand the gas line was abandoned, I'm kind of a pro-business guy, and so I get it, I certainly would support them mining out and taking advantage of having that aggregate, and be able to, to run their business in that fashion. So, in that context, I think having an extension of up to two years makes sense to me as a neighbor. Now, here's my concern, the operators desiring a five-year extension, as they said, because that's when the Musa potentially can kick in, I don't see any reason to do that. I think that, that two years, from my opinion, would be fine, and I'll just tell you, and this is not necessarily about this current operator, but I sat in your seat for ten years, up till a year and a half ago, and, and sat through a number of these conversations that predate actually the city administrator, and I'm pretty frustrated. There's been commitments over the years about reclaiming this mine, and that the extension would be long enough, and, and I think that, quite frankly, it's just been, it's just been really frustrating, and I think it's just time to stop. And so what I would suggest you might consider is that you would extend the permit for two years with the stipulations that are there, and basically add a stipulation that says no more extensions, we're done. And if they don't have time from a product standpoint to fully reclaim the mine by then, from what I understand from city staff, is that they could get a grading permit and continue to fill in what they need to do to accomplish the grading levels that they need. So I just would appreciate your consideration to look at, at most, a two-year extension. As I said, I do support the business community, and I think that that's, that would be good for this business, this operator, to have the opportunity to mine out that, that berm, I think, and then, but I would, I would, I would add a stipulation that simply says no more extensions, we're done, and if you need to continue to bring product in to reclaim, restore the grades that are necessary, they can get a grading permit from city staff. So thank you for letting me speak, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments about the permits? Yep, show.
So, my question would be to slightly maybe compromise on that, a little suggestion a bit, and that to have something in writing that it can only be, if they need a third year to get the property back to the whatever it is that is required of them, I'm sorry, reclaim, that, I, I guess my thought process is, I don't, I really don't want to put the pinch on that section, it's a great opportunity to have the whole thing cleaned up. I understand that it's been forever years, but this opportunity wasn't available to the company at, you know, until the pipeline got cleared out of there. So, I'm just wondering if we can kind of word it a little bit differently, maybe not allow the, the same type of operation after a certain period of time, but, and then allow them that extra, a year to be able to make sure that they can just get it to the point where it needs to be. We never know what the weather's going to be like, and the other thing is, is that I, I'm not even sure what construction season's going to be like in this climate right now, you know, so, I mean, we're putting the pinch on the property because we're wanting to get this done, but maybe we could come up with a way to get it done, and yet come to a kind of a middle compromise on it.
Other comments?
I do have a question. If this were not to be approved today, what would be the impact or next steps?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Lee, or Councilman Lee, the, the result then would be that this proposed area, this berm area, would not be, would not be mined, and then the property owner would have to continue to bring fill into the property for an undetermined amount of time under a grading permit. So the, in other words, this ridge here would, would remain.
And it's my understanding, though, that providing the ability to mine this requires that replacement fill come in?
It doesn't require that it comes in, because they, I don't think that they can control how much fill comes into the property, but it's part of their business plan to do so. The, my understanding is that is the, the ability to get fill into the property plays a big part in having the mining operation, so vehicles have a place to, so the trucks have a place to bring material in and leave with a full load of material for construction. The operator could explain more about how that works if I'm misstating that, but regardless of whether this is one years or two year for the, for, two years for the mining of this berm area, there's still likely to be many years of fill material having to come into the property without it being a mining operation, and that could well be later than twenty twenty-nine.
But by removing that berm, it does create a void that needs to be graded again, right? So, whatever cubic yards come out have to be brought in to replace that?
Oh, true, yeah.
So, to me, So to me, my concern is that this continues to get extended longer than it already has. I, I really struggle with extending this because of the impact on local residents. We've committed to them multiple times that there is going to be an endpoint to this. And I think mining reinitiates a new timeline. And I'm concerned that we, we just keep kicking that can down, down the road. As it stands, we're not in a rush to, to grade this because of the musa. We determined that that was 2030, correct?
After 2029. It was late 20, you know, 30s.
So, I mean, because beyond just the ability to fill this, we're, by having material come out, that's increasing dust and noise and the, the crushing of, thankfully not concrete and imported material, but of the, of the aggregate that is there. So I, I wasn't in favor of the last extension. And I, I still am coming to a conclusion today that I, I just don't think that's the right decision for especially our, the closest neighbors north of the mine. I'd be more in favor if the council is, looked interested in having more of a, a concrete. This is the end, and it's a shorter term. But even, even so, I feel like we just keep dragging this out.
Okay, other comments?
So during the time that I was on the Met Council, I believe we were doing the regional study on aggregate and, you know, the availability of that. And it was a really good lesson for me in how important the proximity of these kinds of resources are to our construction costs. So I, I think that's important to recognize. And I, I do think Michelle's point, though, about, you know, making in, maybe bringing in a little tighter timeline, I'd be open to that.
Okay. Thank you for coming to, to, for the request and all the information. Joshua, I do share your same frustrations. I feel like the fact that we didn't mine has slowed reclamation. I have nothing to prove that, I just, this is my sense. And so what my hope is, is if we can kind of find a middle ground on this like shorter time period, then it'll encourage some, you know, faster response. And then, you know, if, let's say we end 2026 and we're not seeing the results that we're anticipating. We don't, that council does not have to approve an extension. So I, my, the factor for me that has changed is that the last time we had this discussion, there wasn't anything else to mine. So that's kind of the change. So that's where I would be, I think, on page three, three S, 2026. And that's based on the two construction seasons. And then I don't know if we need language on there for then the council to review, or I guess it just runs out beyond the company to come back to the city again.
Mayor, can I ask a question for anchor, maybe Andrea? So if the timeline has changed, and I'm assuming on letter S here, rehabilitation is synonymous with reclamation, right?
Yeah, it's a site rehabilitation, so bringing it to a proper grade.
Right now, there's no deadline on when they have to rehab the entire site.
Currently, no, because there is no mining operation right now, right? It's strictly up to the property owner to arrange for fill to be brought onto the property.
So under today's scenario, trucks could be coming into the site for decades theoretically.
For a long time, potentially.
If this is approved, there's a drop dead date of when any material would be coming in by this deadline.
Under the, the mining activity, which would be the, the excavation of the proposed area and crushing and sorting of materials from that mined area, everything from that point would be, and, and the hauling of the material off-site would have to be completed by that time unless there's other arrangements made. But bringing fill into the property after the expiration date would work under a grading permit that would be overseen by the city.
Okay, so now I'm confused. I thought reclamation meant, and rehabilitation meant bringing material in.
Yes, that's what that means, right. So this interim use permit, if it was proposed under the proposed timeline or an amended timeline, that would be active for mining, crushing, sorting, also bringing in material during that time. But once the mining and, and the aggregate is hauled off of the property and the interim use permit expires, the owner can still bring fill material onto the property with a grading permit. There will be no more mining activity.
Because they, just to clarify, then they can't sell the property for development. I mean, they can sell property for this, but they can't sell it for development until it's fully reclaimed?
Yeah, the, the purpose of the reclamation plan is to bring it to an elevation that it can sustain sanitary sewer to the property. And right now, it cannot. So it would sit until the property is brought up to X elevation to accomplish that before development can occur.
I guess they could sell it, somebody else could reclaim it. But you couldn't develop.
It wouldn't be developed.
Yeah, you couldn't develop until it was reclaimed. Okay, Joshua?
So it doesn't necessarily help really any timeline. It sounds like the only motivator to pulling this up to grade is the musa becoming in effect, which would allow development and sewer sanitary theoretically.
Only assuming if the southern property owners agree with it.
So, so really, there's no motivation for the foreseeable future for this parcel to come to grade. So in terms of this and its impact on, on finishing the project, it, I don't, it doesn't sound like the mining helps accelerate the, the grading process or the full rehabilitation. No, that's not a question.
SSG, do you guys want to respond to that? Do you have an answer?
If that wasn't able to be mined, the material coming in would be drastically reduced or even stopped. Because if there's an operator or an operation on site and it, our materials become depleted, we pull off. There's no operator to take that incoming fill. If we get 300,000 cubic yards of natural aggregates and the motivator for the site rehabilitation is the property owner, with our agreement with him, we get access to the natural aggregates that can use the site for that purpose. His only stipulation with us is that you continue reclamation. With the access and the sales of 300,000 of yards of aggregates and the processing stockpiling, we can get bigger volume jobs and structure our sales accordingly to actually bring that fill in.
Can you explain the business model a bit? Maybe that'll help us understand. Like, are you, are you selling aggregate to people who are also giving you fill? And so it's a better business relationship and that, is that what you're saying? Or my, is that not accurate?
Uh, it sort of is. With any construction site, you do have export off of that job site. And they need materials to replace that, whether they're putting in a driveway, concrete slab, or a huge parking lot. They got to remove that material. They bring it to us, and because of the freight cost, they would structure their haul to be a two-way haul. So they would come in, dump their common off, compactable fill, and get reloaded with sand, class V aggregate base, or rock products from this pit to backhaul to the job. If we have a significant amount of products available, we can quote bigger jobs, bigger parking lots, bigger types of construction that allow those higher volume activities, which will speed up the, the reclamation.
So are there competitors of yours that are doing that where they're taking bigger projects that maybe you're missing out on?
Yeah, John, you want to, maybe, he's our sales manager.
John Fritz, Superior Sand and Gravel. So basically, if we have sand in here, aggregates to export, we will get more, it basically comes in at like a two to one. So if there's a, say, a street job in Lakeville, they dig out, they haul their clay into here, and then they take sand back out.
So two, you, you say two times of clay versus one?
It's probably something like that. They always end up with more clay than they do sand.
So I guess after learning that, like, that's why I'd say a two years and say, well, how much do we actually reclaim? You know, are we finding? The answer that we're hearing today, I mean, if you have two years of mining and we're actually getting that, I would then determine and say, okay, we're, you know, we're going to extend or not based on that activity. If you want to do one year to see how it goes, I'm fine with that, too, I think.
Another question. If we get to the point where the site is developable, and it's not at the proper grade, but you want to sell that piece of land to that developer, what is the strategy for filling that on a tighter timeframe? How do you get that material if you have a buyer?
It would be, it would be really tough if you didn't have any material to, any sand to sell out of there to get material back in. That makes sense.
I mean, because this, this remaining strip doesn't seem to be enough to, you know, from a one-to-one standpoint, doesn't seem to be enough to, to fill all of this property. So that's the other piece of this. How do we get to the full grade?
So if, if, if say, a contractor calls and they say, hey, I, I have 2,000 yards of common to get rid of, but I need 1,500 tons of sand back. And I'd say, okay, we have the sand there, and we can, we can do that sort of operation. And if we don't, they're just going to go some, you know, somewhere else to do this. Because everybody wants the two-way haul.
So is there, is there some sort of, where we can put a performance standard and say, okay, if you reclaimed above average next year, then we'll extend it for a second year? Can we, or is that, I mean, obviously, you guys know how much is coming and going because that's how you charge. I'm just wondering, you know, if we use that 100,000 or 90,000 or whatever, if you exceed that, then we'd extend it through 26, and then that council can review it. I mean, I don't want to get too complicated, but I think I would be more comfortable knowing that if we are actually speeding up reclamation, then I'm fine with keeping the mining going. Because I totally understand, you know, just dumping dirt on my own yard, I'm going to go somewhere if I can get the rock from the landscaper. I totally get that. I don't know if that makes sense for everybody.
The grading plan was designed so that the aggregate removed from that berm, berm would be about a one-to-one for the fill needed. It doesn't look like it, but.
I would still like to stick to two years. I mean, I, I think it gets a little more complicated because then you're asking our staff to do like some sort of inspections. And, you know, we're getting more people involved and just.
So you'd say expire in 2026, and then that council can just review and?
That would be my next compromise, too. I would rather see it go three years, but, but one year's too short. And it's just not even, you're just kicking the can a little bit. You know, I guess the thing is, is that we have to be respectful that in the, I feel, I'm sorry, I feel that I need to be respectful that this is a business and this is an opportunity for them to be able to reclaim this property easier because of this opportunity that was given to them. Had that not come up, I would probably be like Joshua and say, you know what? We said no, done, quit. But because of that, I'm just looking at it as an opportunity to help this business get it done as fast as they possibly can. But I don't want to cramp. I, I just, I, I also, I can't imagine the trouble that the, just coming back here on the third year to say, we're almost there, but we're not quite, you know? So I, I guess I'm just trying to be a little bit more flexible. And, but I'm willing to compromise with the rest of the council if you can at least give them the two years. That would be good, good enough for me, I guess.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion for this and then changing the date? Do we want to reject it and have more conversation? What do we, where do we want to go? I mean, I think there's at least two of us that have, you know, some sort of two-year, but.
I would agree with Michelle on three, but.
Okay. The only problem is because there's four of us. I don't support three years, and I think Joshua doesn't either. And so then we end up with a tie, and then you'd have to come back to another council.
So what you're basically saying is, is it's going to come back to another council one way or the other if we?
Yeah, it either comes back in December, well, obviously not in December 26 because they probably want to do it before. It either comes back in the fall of 26 or the fall of 27, based on our conversations.
No, I meant if we can't, if we were two-two today, you're saying that it would come back to the council. So one way or the other, it.
Well, it would fail and they could come back, yeah. If it's tied, it's.
Then I would just.
Or that motion's.
Then I would rather just lay it over till the next council meeting, till we have a full council. Let the deciding factor be the next person then. Because I, I think it should be three years, I really do.
Okay.
So then there needs to be a motion to table.
And then is there a certain timeline on that? We just have to bring it up to the next meeting?
Yes, I'd recommend you table it to the next meeting because there is a 60-day deadline that you have to deal with.
Okay. So is there a motion for that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Till the next meeting?
Till the next meeting, yes, which is May 20, I believe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the motion to table this until the next meeting? Okay, roll call?
Lee?
Aye.
Bull?
Aye.
Hellyer?
Aye.
Walter?
Aye.
Okay. Sorry, you have to come back in two weeks. Moving on to items eight and nine, unfinished and new business. Anything to add? Okay. With that, our next regular city council meeting is on the 20th, May, right here at 6 o'clock. And our next work session is the 28th, also here at City Hall at 6 o'clock. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me, one more announcement. Saturday is International Day of Living Together in Peace at Casperson. It's a civic event put out, sponsored by a handful of different community groups. And you can find information on their Facebook page. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, adjourned.